Let me say, before we call it to order and have the invocation, again, item E of your new business will be consideration canceling to March 23rd. Well, I thank you all for being here tonight. A few new faces. It's good to have you here. Mr. Manning, you have been recovering from a little bit of medical procedure. It's good to have you with us tonight. If you would mind coming to lead us in our invocation place to the flag, if everyone would please stand.
Well, I'm Mr. Manning. I'd like to have each one of you remember how they join. Mr. Swafford, we done his escort today. He had his physical two weeks ago. They come back perfect health. We want to wake him up, Lord, take him home. Just been with that family prayer. That was Bob Davis's daughter's father-in-law. And so us, remember the family, all the family. And what they like, y'all help me pray about leave fix it before we can have some more escort. And it wasn't, nobody's fault. There's had some people in crisis today. And we had two cars. We had forty something people, so you imagine when we were two cars, gotta keep forty people in line. We had fun. From here to date, Tennessee, we had fun. So us, remember that. Let's pray to the Lord, send some more folks that wants to help if we need it. And I know a lot of our men is in service, working and everything. So just remember that. And remember my son-in-law's brother, wife, and their family, they buried her today. She was twenty-seven-year-old and three young kids. That's really a family that's in part where they're torn pretty bad. So just remember that, Pilkier. Let us pray. Okay, Father, if we come to you now, Lord, we thank you for each one of the council, the Lord, and the layer, and the city manager. Thank you for each one of you that come out this way, and, Lord, we ask you to go that way. Death angle, today, indifferent, wants more. And God, we ask you, Lord, just to lead and guide this city. Lord, financially wise, spiritually wise, or anything, this city needs to go forward to make it better. And God, we know you can do it. We know we can't do it without you, so, Lord, we ask you to help us, each one of us, God, for it to go forward. In Jesus' name, say amen.
Let us pray.
I pray to lead to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. We'll head to the old coffins.
Mayor Lamber.
Here.
Councilor School.
Here.
Councilmember Haggel.
Here.
Councilmember Hilton.
Here.
Councilmember Williams.
Here.
City Manager Miller.
Here.
City Attorney Luke.
Here.
Trust everyone has had opportunity to review the items in the consent agenda. The minutes for the February ninth Agenda Work Session, as well as the February ninth Regular Council Meeting, the January 2017 Financial Statement, and the Declaration of Surplus Property. Have a motion and a second to approve. Roll call, please.
Councilor School.
Yes.
Councilmember Haggel.
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton.
Yes.
Councilmember Williams.
Yes.
Mayor Lamber.
Yes.
This time we will entertain communication from citizens. I think I did see a signature on the signed in form there. If you're a resident in the city of East Ridge for a business owner here in the city and have a comment, question, or concern you'd like to bring to the council, this would be your opportunity to do so. If you'll come to the, one of the two microphones here at the front, state your name and address for the record. You will have five minutes. And the individual we had signed in was Laura Mathis, 2100 McBrien Road.
I have heard a lot of things, like a survey getting posted here or something where. And I just wanted to know if you were aware of how active the East Ridge Neighborhood Watchstop is. We currently have over seven thousand members. It was in the last two weeks, we had two random acts of kindness, and we had seven hundred likes for that. So I would be glad to work with y'all if you get your survey up or something, because there are so many people that go to that site. If you really want to know what the people think, you need to come. I mean, they're there. They're on the Neighborhood Watchstop. Just scroll past all the watchstops, and you'll get to the crimes and things like that. What this week was going by, I wrote, the citizens wanted to know about the gas scanners.
The skimmers?
Yeah, yeah, we keep getting complaints about gas stations on East Ridge. Or my help, Boulevard, those things.
Chief might be able to talk a little bit more about that. I don't know if there's any new news on that. I know there was one gas station that was found that had, it'd been, two pumps, I think, were tampered with.
Yes, sir, in our city, that, it's been happening all across the region. Chattanooga's found some, if I'm not mistaken, they've either found them in Saudi. I'm not sure if that's confirmed yet or not. But it has been going around along the region, so.
I know they caught, I've been hitting on Highway 153, they caught two guys from Florida. As they were attempting to place the skimmers on the pumps.
So the businesses are paying more attention now to the pump shop.
And I was actually, first time in my life, about three weeks ago, when my credit card companies called me and said, hey, are you in Florida, Sanford, Florida, trying to get gas? I said, no, but why not? We're near Sanford, Florida. And so they had, someone had somehow got my number, created a card, and attempted to use it at a gas station. So they, thankfully, credit card company didn't let the transaction go through and canceled the account, all the rest. But potentially, someone got that number from a skimmer or something else like that.
There has been two big credit card hits lately. One of them was here in East Ridge, where we received around eighty thousand dollars worth of bonus cards and what have you. The Highway Patrol got hurt, get hit not long ago, it was an I-40 with eight hundred thousand dollars worth of fraud on credit cards. So like, and all these people that we're catching are from out there.
Thank you, Chief. Appreciate that.
Thank you so much. Let's see, the Family Dollar has been complaining, the Cascades is using the area where their dumpster's located to throw miscellaneous toilet clothes and junk and stuff behind that building.
Okay.
But we would really welcome you all to join the East Ridge Neighborhood Watchgroup because people really, there's seven thousand people, and they really do watch it every day.
Well, thank you very much. Appreciate it. Do we have another? Let's see then, we'll move to communication from council members. Ms. Hilton?
I'd just like to welcome our, please, the Attorney Mark Police.
Thank you, thank you. Have anything else? Wait.
Likewise, welcome to the board. Also, as Jeanie mentioned, keep this one family, the first, they live on the street from me. It's sad to see something that tragic and sudden happen. Also, to Ms. Mathis, I'd like to endeavor one, check with your credit card service provider. I know I have a mindset that any time I use credit card on a fuel pump, it notifies me immediately. It sends me a text. Same thing for internet sales. The internet sale, it sends me a text notification. So I'll know immediately if anything is going on erroneously. So check with your credit card provider, might get some assistance there and some preventative notifications. Never be too sick.
Thanks, sir.
Mr. Sewell. I guess I'll almost say some welcome, welcome, Attorney here too also. But when she's bringing up about the gas pumps, you know, I noticed that they've got like, I think, Sands and Costco both have their own red sticker, so they'll get tackled with. Or why some of these other companies are not, are not doing that? I mean, you see a seal broken, you know, you need to want to tell somebody. If you're like, the guys that do it, if you put their own seal on it, I think you play monitor of them, it's their seal or whatever. Or something we could bring up to the businesses in these streets if they would do that.
If those stickers are present, it is a telltale sign of it's broken. Beware of that. Thank you. Mr. Cable?
Yes, sir. I'd like to welcome Mr. Mentry, even though I'm alone, but he's, it's hard to go and work together to get through. All right, and my next thing is, Life Care down here has built us a beautiful piece of property. Let us up there and look at it. When you get off the freeway going south.
I think I know where you're going with this.
First thing we look at is that awful mess of trees sitting up there. So I would like to see if we could go in there, tear it out, where we can see that beautiful building. Stay close for a minute.
Yes, absolutely. I agree too. Because you're right, it, it's bad enough right now with the leaves on those things. But once the leaves come back, it's gonna obscure a lot of that building. And it's, and it's not like they're big, pretty decorative kind of trees. It's just stuff that grew up there. Yeah, yes, definitely. Very good point. I mean, if we could make contact with T-Dot in some way and ask if that can be done, or if we have the ability.
I think we're gonna have to do it.
Well, Life Care had actually, at one point, a couple of years ago, requested the ability to maintain that area from T-Dot. And T-Dot asked us if we cared, and we said, no, we don't care. If, you know, as long as they maintain it. So.
We'll find a way.
Yeah, so either, I don't know if we're technically still responsible or have an ability to go in and take care of that. But because Life Care was going to do the project they're doing, they wanted the ability to do landscaping, do some things to really beautify that area.
I think they have a mass man scanner, mass man scanner on their side of the field, so, and we don't want to see that.
Right. So one way or the other, if, whether it's us asking T-Dot or us asking Life Care, however, we'll figure it out. All right, I just want to say again, the opportunity to, I'm sorry, Mr. Cable, did you have anything else?
Yes, sir, please.
Just gonna say again, the opportunity to pitch in and know about it, it's right through the elementary school, Saturday, March 4th. If you only have an hour that you could go out there and help, I'm sure that it will be very appreciated. Have talked to, not only, this is interior work, doing some painting in one wing of the school. I would love to be able, and I think Mr. Sewell and I have kind of batted this around for years, going down there at some point, spring break or summer or something, and pressure washing the outside of the school. It's pretty, pretty bad looking.
After that, we can pressure wash City Hall.
Yes.
It's gonna be a little bad on the other side.
Get a volunteer crew together to take care of that. Us needing maintenance, no, sir, you're, you're absolutely right. So just wanted to remind everyone of that. Also, of course, I want to welcome Mark Litchford. And glad to have you here. Look forward to working with you. And I believe that is all that we have at the moment. Mr. City Manager, do you have anything for us?
No, Councilor. Thank you.
Okay. And with that, we will proceed to old business. And ordinance number 1028, we're gonna have a public hearing for it. First, Mr. Litchford, if you would mind reading the caption for ordinance 1028. Ordinance?
An ordinance to the City Council of the City of East Ridge, Tennessee, to amend the East Ridge zoning ordinance, ordinance number 481, which amends Title 14, Chapter 2, Article 6, Sections 108 through 110 of the East Ridge Municipal Code as it relates to on-premise and off-premise sign and billboard regulations.
Thank you, sir. Having been properly advertised, we are going to open the public hearing for the signed ordinance. If, same rules apply basically as during citizen communication. If you're a resident in the city of East Ridge or a business owner and have a comment, question, or concern related to the signed ordinance, this would be an opportunity for you to let your voice be heard. If you'll come to one of the two microphones here at the front of the room, state your name and address for the record of items. Let's see now. Council members, do you have any, any questions ahead of the potential second and final reading?
I'd like to have a verification of two thousand, is it two thousand feet between the? LED signs?
It is for billboards.
Billboards.
Billboards and off-premise signs, two thousand feet within any, within the, either right.
How about a pole sign?
Pole sign.
Yeah, if they want to put a LED sign up on a pole sign.
They can.
Can.
The only way that that can happen is if they already have a electronic cabinet available.
Okay, are there any other questions? Okay, at this time, are you here done? Mr. Guss, if you have anything you'd like to mention, okay? All right, well, with that, we will close the public hearing for ordinance 1028. And we will proceed to 8B, which is consideration of ordinance 1028 on second and final reading. We've already read the caption, so that's not necessary again. Do we have a motion in regard to ordinance 1028? Motion approved. We have a motion to approve and a second. Are there any questions? You're done, so we will proceed to roll call, please.
Councilor School.
Yes.
Councilmember Haggel.
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton.
Yes.
Councilmember Williams. Excuse me, Councilmember Williams.
Yes.
Mayor Lamber.
Yes.
Yay. This has been a long time coming.
And that's what I was gonna say, I really appreciate everybody's patience. So this has been twelve to twenty-four month process. Spent, there's been a lot of individuals involved, and it's nice to actually have this done. So I really appreciate your patience and, and working, it's been a pleasure working with everybody and the planning commission, they've done a fantastic job, so thank you.
Thank you, Kenny, thank you. Yes, we appreciate it very much. And this is one of those things we've been pointing to for quite a while, is this is one more thing that we can do to help, frankly, clean up some areas of East Ridge, our business district that needed to be cleaned. And we want to be as business friendly as possible, but there also has to be consequences when things aren't done the right way. All right, board appointments. I have a beer board appointment that I need to make, and one more planning commission, potentially planning commission appointment. I have reached out to and approved a couple of times. Haven't been able to actually speak with her, she's had some health issues. And so indicated to Kenny that maybe, at least for now, she probably wouldn't be able to participate if they need to be replaced. And so, so I want to, want to actually speak with her before that happens. But I think, I think that would be imminent. And then I have a potential beer board appointee. I'll be honest with you, I've asked a couple of people, and they said no. So I have someone that Gretchen mentioned to me earlier. And so I'm gonna reach out to that person, happen to know that person, didn't know they were interested in, in the beer board. But certainly will be very pleased to speak with that person. So hopefully, we'll be able to wrap those things up next time. We will move to new business of 9A Resolution 2632.
A resolution of the City Council of the City of East Ridge, Tennessee, approving bids for the purchase and installation of a fire alarm system at East Ridge City Hall.
Mayor, Councilman Lee.
Kate.
For the commission and request to submit bids, have been submitted to us for a fire alarm system. The fire alarm system in this building was, that's currently installed, is the original system. It's, it's beyond repair. Can't get parts for it anymore, so we went ahead and went out to bid. We had three companies that submitted bids. Action Alarms, International Equipment Company, and SWC. Action Alarm bid coming at thirteen thousand, six hundred with a monitoring fee of twenty-five dollars a month. International Equipment Company, fourteen thousand, three ninety-six, thirty-seven with a monitoring fee of thirty dollars a month. And SWC at twenty thousand, nine hundred, thirty-seven dollars and fifty-nine cents, and they didn't specify a monitoring fee. The city would like to recommend that we go to the Action Alarms, which is the current little bit. Action Alarms, carbon surfaces all the municipal buildings for fire alarms, carbon alarms, and also for all the street teams. And the city also received twenty-five hundred dollar grants that Amanda worked on for installations.
Very nice. Okay, do we have a motion in regard to Resolution 2632?
Motion approved.
We have motion to approve. We have a second.
Second question.
Do you have a second? Any question?
I have one comment, I didn't like, it's Action Alarm, acting as monitor for my home, so I don't have the problem. I don't think so. It's more than that. My legal benefit is not the one that can.
So total cost will be eleven thousand, one hundred dollars.
Yes, sir, plus twelve hundred dollars a year for making, for monitoring. Yes.
How much?
Twelve hundred dollars a year. Twenty-five thousand, sorry.
Whoa. Yeah, that's fine. Four hundred dollars.
Yeah.
Three hundred?
Right, three hundred.
Three hundred, yeah.
Yes, ma'am.
I'd like to raise the.
Okay. So it's going to be the low bid, which was Action Alarm. Jackie, you made the, you made the motion, Ms. Hilton, you made the second, so if I'm saying this incorrectly, please let me know. It was Action Alarm in the amount of thirteen thousand, six hundred dollars with an additional monitoring charge of twenty-five per month. And as it states, if you have a resolved, if you've stridged, twenty-five hundred dollars to offset the cost. Okay, I think that fills in all the blanks that we need to have filled in. So it really costs us eleven thousand, one hundred dollars plus the monitoring fee. But for the purposes of filling in the blanks, it's thirteen thousand, six hundred dollars is the bill.
Mayor?
Yes?
Do we currently have a alarm system in place? Is this new?
This is, this, it's actually a total replacement.
Total replacement.
Very, very, he actually does his monitoring, he also do mine too.
Okay.
And they do the super fine job.
Very good.
We're Johnny on the spot, and we have problems, of course, I had one problem of mine, and I had to have everything down, so.
Got you. Okay. No, no problem.
Don't either find it, which is different.
All right. So we have a motion and a second? We'll head to roll call, please.
Councilor School.
Yes.
Councilmember Haggel.
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton.
Yes.
Councilmember Williams.
Yes.
Your honor.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item B, a request from Ripper River City Corvette Club to use Camp Jordan Arena on August 5th, 2017 for a car show with the fee waived. Yes.
You told me, it's just here, it's a little top.
Well, what little top is that?
Last two years, we've had a car show, Camp Jordan Rands, been a success. I think we've given twenty-five hundred dollars two years ago, two thousand dollars last year. The big problem we had last year was the vendor of food ran out early. And we were wondering if there was any opportunity for us to have another vendor set up outside the arena.
No, sir. No, sir.
I tried. Well, we told Gary.
Yes, ma'am. Oh, I'm sorry, can we get your, for the round, can we get your name?
Oh, I'm Chuck Logan, and I am an ex-guillotine resident, so I'm glad they chose charity, cause my heart.
All right, very good, well, we'll just tell the concession company to have, make sure they have extra amounts of food.
We just need to sit down with them, and let them tell them what they want them to have. They do that with most everybody, because everybody, everything doesn't like it. What may be are the type people who be coming to a car show are not the same people that's coming to soccer. And if they, you know, there's some things, chicken salad sandwiches sell like crazy. There's some that they just want a hot dog. So whatever y'all decide to want, they can go, what kind of beer y'all want out there.
I mean, I know what you really want. We'll take care, we'll, we'll sit down, talk, and try to make it work out.
And if, correct me if I'm wrong, but a portion of what is generated by the show comes back to.
Actually, we have several events throughout the year to raise money for charities, and we have two charities. And East Ridge did each other a fund, we get half of everything we raised throughout the year.
It has.
And giving us forty-five hundred dollars in two years to the each child fund.
Far, far more than what the.
More than the renewals of cost for one day, and they don't even stay all day.
Right.
So it's, it's a good situation for us.
And we love to go see the car shows.
We love it. Thank you.
All right, thank you, guys. Appreciate it very much. Okay, do we have a, a motion in regard to this request?
Motion approved.
Okay, we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Sure, a second. Any comments or questions? Roll call, please.
Ms. Fisherstool?
Yes.
Councilmember Cagle?
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton?
Yes.
Councilmember Wade?
I'm gonna disclose that I am a member of the club as well as.
Mayor Labor?
Yes.
So you have three upstairs next to him.
All right, that request is granted. Item C, your request for the Optimist Club to use Kent Garden Arena on Saturday, June 24th for a car show with the fee waived. Mr. Cagle, I know you're a part of the Optimist Club, do you have any information that?
Uh, yes, sir, the Optimist Club, they take out our money, they earn off this car show, because this is our, this is the barbecue, we use the park, our big money maker for the year, and we take this money and sponsor fishing row, we don't charge nobody nothing, we have a fishing row, we have a table, we don't, and we take this money and, maybe that Christmas dinner we do, the ones that I was just telling you about, the garage crap, right, we take that money and feed those kids or whatever the kids, but have them having that stuff there for them, sure, and give them money to set up the other schools right here, and, you know, it's just things that goes on and on to give to the kids, so. I am a member of it, two other members sitting here, so.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna make sure then.
There was a big, that's what I was thinking about, with the abstaining, I wasn't making
sure, you know, we had enough to get through. I'm a member too, by the way, so.
But if there's no money, you have to, any, any member of ours, we take no money, it's all, but they give the kids, so, no profit.
Mr. Martin, is there a contract with these agencies?
Yes, sir, they do.
Okay, okay, wasn't that, that?
Yeah, there's no problem on either one of them, and this is the third year we've done business with the, with both of them, I mean, we're taking it to death to have them both out there. And car shows are one of our big, I wish we had more car shows, and my wife wishes I wouldn't watch all those car things on TV where they're making, rebuilding cars, but, you know, we want a lot of car shows.
Under the city code on conflicts, it talks about section one, six oh seven, unofficial employment not used or authorized to use municipal time, facilities, equipment, or supplies for private gain or venture, advance, excuse me, or advantage between a private person or entity except as authorized by legitimate contract or lease, it's determined by the company body to be in best interest of municipal cost, that's why I ask, so if there's a contract, then you disclose if there is one you can vote, in this case, if there's no advantage that you're gonna get.
Thanks, sir.
All right. Well, do we have a motion in regard to this request?
Make a motion to approve.
Okay. Do we have a motion and a second? Roll call, please.
Ms. Fisherstool?
Yes.
Councilmember Cagle?
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton?
Yes.
Councilmember Wade?
Yes.
Mayor Labor?
Yes. Item D, discuss, take action on board appointments for the Diggish Child Club. We have several, several names that have been mentioned, so, it's, it's really up to the council, to how many people we put on there initially, we need to have at least four to serve as, as officers, and I believe we've talked about also having the city manager on that board initially, and then he will resign at the first meeting.
Correct.
Yeah, but there is a due list now, right?
I, I saw.
Yes, I, I sent it.
Because I know Janet, Janet Thun has to be.
Yes. I sent it, I emailed that to you yesterday.
Right, this just shows you, I'll move to you.
Who was the other guy?
Tommy Rowe?
Tommy Rowe.
Tom Rowe, uh, Wisconsin, Missouri.
And R O E.
Yeah, I would love to see, if all of these people are willing to serve, I would love to see them all on there. We could do, we could do it a couple of different ways, we could just do the bare minimum of four of these names to begin with, and then that board then appoints additional people to serve with them on the board. So, there's a couple of different ways we can do this, we're trying to say.
Mayor, have you already talked to somebody, taken it directly?
Yes, I, all of those that have my name next to it, Mr. Burns, Ms. Colburn, Ms. Lambert, I have talked to them.
They're on the phone. Ms. Webb's here, audience, and I'll talk to her. Right.
I'll talk to Ms. Lowry.
Okay.
I'll talk with the city.
I'll, I'll go.
Okay. And I'll talk to Mr. Rowe. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, plus nine, if we count the city manager.
What I'm reading here is there's no fewer than seven. I'd like to nominate all eight of them, the city manager heading up the first meeting, or did he withdraw after he enhanced the format and the setup?
Technically, it was in your packet here on the articles for corporation, this had not been adopted by the company yet. Generally, you have an organizer, incorporated, and in connection with that, you would have had an appointment of however many you all decided this government body, you could have decided that before, then you would form the company, and then there would be minutes somewhere reflecting adoption bylaws. I don't think that occurred here, the company hasn't been, or the organization's been formed. But the, what you see here, the articles incorporated have not been adopted by, the charter has been filed, not the, not the articles. There's a charter here, there, that just incorporated, the incorporated not going to sit on the board as the director, regarding this nonprofit, so you all, you all could appoint, you're doing it right, you could appoint as a vote right now, however many you want to appoint now, as few or as many, but where it talks about, there is no requirement that there be, there'll be fewer than seven at this time, that the articles haven't been adopted.
Gotcha, so once, once the board gets four, do they adopt the articles of corporation, then, then they will not be able to have a less than seven?
That's correct, that's what they adopt.
Right.
That's correct.
Okay.
I thought we did, we're just George's incorporated, so we had to have him to get it on.
In the, but there's a difference between an incorporated and an organizer, or those are appointed, or he, he did incorporate, but that doesn't give him any authority to set up, obviously, and so, and I don't see any minutes from the setup of this corporation, so this council would set up fewer as many as you want on the board with regard to the Diggish Child Fund.
And then that board would then come back and adopt whatever articles of incorporation they wanted to adopt, so they could, they could make this no fewer than seven members, they could make that the law that governs them, or they could do something different.
That's correct, you tell it without bylaws, it says articles, and corporations say bylaws.
Correct.
Yes, that was my confusion as well, as I emailed you earlier.
Yeah, this is confused, what it's worth to you all, generally, the recommendation is an odd number to eliminate the chances of a tie, if you elect four, just potentially have a struggle there, so, yeah, our recommendation would be three or five.
Well, with the eight that are interested in, in city manager start, then that gives us nine, and then he'll, he'll withdraw or resign from that, and they could, they could add someone else. All right. So, Mr. Cagle, did you make, you made a motion?
I made the motion, and, and accept all eight of these, Mr. Miller, heading up the first meetings to have them be organized, if he can resign thereafter, or the time.
Okay.
I'll say.
We have a motion and a second. We're gonna have to roll call, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, something there.
No, 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 go ahead.
Do we need to address the, where the charter information on section four, section nine, where it's got a different address, does that need to be updated, so the information is?
You put it over on here, all that takes is just to file it with the secretary of state, I can, I can do that, I'll get with Mr. Miller, and what we do, if you want to change the registered agent and the principal office, you can make it to city hall if you want to.
Yes, that should, the city hall should, the city attorney.
Sorry, Mayor.
No, 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 you're fine, that's a little too quick, I know that question.
Just a section nine and section?
Uh, section four, yes.
Ah, no, I'll get Mr. Miller to change those, it's just a simple filing.
Yep.
A small fee.
Okay, do we have any other questions?
Well?
Yes.
And then I don't know if you need to address eleven, I notice eleven, four, nine, eleven, I'm not sure if it's, since he was initiated, maybe that's material.
It'll be, this will be, you'll want to change number ten, and then, no, number eleven, he just simply was the, the party, it probably shows his sign, because the incorporated down there or something, but incorporated is different than it.
We should receive the information on.
Yes. When we change his address, we'll get that from the state.
Anything else? Board reg, they'll, they'll set up bylaws in sections two or three.
That's correct.
They like saying, you get along going, then you're resigned, and they'll, whatever they, they'll.
Maybe decide they have a number of eleven, or thirteen, or fifteen, they gotta understand that this is a, a working board, a working 501(c)(3) nonprofit, they have no staff, so, so, people on this line are gonna be looking on fundraisers within themselves, and as well, you know, volunteers, everybody else, family members, et cetera.
And one question, once, once this board sets up bylaws, that will give me the information I need to go and see, the exemption under the tax code, with these Form 1023 and the IRS forms, it's about a six to 12 month process to make it, to verify, certify that exempt nonprofit corporation purchases a 501(c)(3). It is currently a nonprofit, I'm gonna state, but that doesn't mean it's exempt from taxation.
Gotcha. So, will you sit in with them, or some of the names to?
He's gonna sit on the first one.
All right.
He and I will sit on the first one, getting the movie.
Yes.
He'll be gone, no.
Be my nature, I was smoking.
Doesn't mean I can't show up, and I'll show up as long as you're.
That's my strength, I don't know if we, if it is, but so, we would have no city employees involved here, so, so I think, he would have to resign after the first meeting, after everyone's.
If the organization creates its own bylaws, I don't know if we can enforce that, I might be speaking out of turn, is it?
As a council? Yes. That's right, no, it's a separate standing, freestanding organization. That's correct.
All right.
As you're saying now, since we passed our thing to have this done, the stipulations that we have no city employees involved in the Diggish Child Fund, that's, it looks big, like a volunteer to get this.
Yeah, I don't know that we could forbid them from having a, an employee on the board, however, to, I think it would be wise for that to happen, just to stay as far away from any conflict as we could possibly fit, so I don't, I don't think we can make them if you're really.
I thought that's what, totally, to give us.
Well, that was, it is, that's what we wanted to do, and that's what we have done to set it up, at least initially, so that there can't be a, a company of, you know, an employee on the board now, you know, a year from now, depending on what kind of bylaws they adopt, they may, they may adopt bylaws that are okay, that they'll make it okay for an employee to sit on the board, but, at least for a while, I think it would probably make good sense to avoid that. So, and again, that will be up to this board, these folks that we are voting on, as to what they adopt, it's up to them, but I think they should have an understanding of the, I guess, the history of this, of this subject, why this is being done the way it's being done. Any other question?
I thought I'd throw that out there.
We have a roll call, please.
Ms. Fisherstool?
Yes.
Councilmember Cagle?
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton?
Yes.
Councilmember Wade?
Yes.
Mayor Labor?
Yes. All right, the last item which we added during the agenda session is consideration of canceling the March 23rd meeting because of, that being spring break week, the legislative conference in Nashville is the first part of that week, we have a card meeting on the 30th, so we can't really move the meeting, the council meeting to then, we are required by charter to have one meeting a month, we will meet that requirement by meeting on March 9th, so unless there is a, we'll need a motion and a second to, to cancel the meeting.
Motion to cancel.
Yeah, but I don't think, I don't see a pressing reason to, to try to do it any other way.
Second motion?
Motion and a second to cancel the March 23rd meeting. Any other questions? Roll call, please.
Ms. Fisherstool?
Yes.
Councilmember Cagle?
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Mayor Labor?
Yes. That's all we have for tonight. Thank you all for being here today. We have a great evening, we'll see you.